Have the Town and Tennessee Board of Trustees, Special Meeting May 30th, 2023 at 6:00 PM, Town Hall Council Room. Call to order and roll call, please.
Dave?
Here.
Harold?
Here.
Cliff?
Here.
Bert?
Here.
Randy?
Here.
Schedule business, discuss, approve, award, review, reject, and/or deny action on the following: A, discussion with a possible action to approve and pay worth hydrochem payment from '09-22 that was missed.
Wow. How did we miss that?
That's a good question because it was $28,262.50.
Are we sure we missed it?
I had Denise go back and, or Ronnie, go back and check our paid, on payments, the checks, and there was nothing in that timeframe, in that, in 2022, that matched up with this. So, no, it wasn't.
David, did anybody check with AgroChem?
They're the ones that brought our attention. They got with Colin Group, who, you know, is kind of a girl between, and Brian Schruegel contacted me and sent me the invoice that you guys have. And then I had Ronnie, like I said, had Ronnie go through, and I think I got you guys these papers too, with the payments for that timeframe, and there's nothing on there for this.
So, the engineering firm actually agrees that we owe them money?
Yeah, yeah.
I make a motion to approve and pay worth hydrochem payment from '09-2022 of $28,262.50.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Cliff?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Discussion with possible action to approve the contract from Marsa Enterprises for $217,737 on the Reef Waterline Project Grant, have to, a number KF-23-2, and authorize a mayor to sign the contract.
Is that on the Dunlap project?
That is your reef waterline, is that where it's called Dunlap? Yes. You guys give it a different term than I do.
Guys just go by the street name.
Yes.
I think I remember, did that, did that just include one fire hydrant replacement? There's one at Sixth and Dunlap that is probably the worst fire hydrant in town. Well, no, probably, it is.
Um, here, at the bid tab sheet, um...
Do we have that?
Fire hydrants. It just says one fire hydrant.
Just one?
Mm-hmm. I'm not sure which one it is, but they only listed one. They only bid out one.
One at Sixth. Six. I've got a little closer here. I think we got that.
Did we tell what happened? Hmm? Or should we just look at, because we didn't review it, that this is the part they took out of the first bid?
This is your reef grant. This is the water line project.
Oh, water line project. Oh, okay.
Yeah, this is a different one.
Excuse me.
We, you guys got a lot going on, so just let it keep them straight.
Okay.
No, that's okay.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Yep.
Jennifer, is that, refresh my memory, is that within our grant?
Yes, I believe so. When we, when we talked about awarding it to them, it is within the funds that you're adding in, the grant money.
So, this is just based, I see now.
Yeah, you've already awarded it.
This is just approval of the contract.
Now you're signing the contract.
Okay. My bad, my memory.
No, it's been a few days.
I make a motion to approve the contract with Marsa Enterprises for $217,737 on Reef Waterline Project Grant Number KF-23-2.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Bert?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
Mr. Cliff, can I have your sign?
Tell Denise to spin.
Yes. Kelly, did you bring your stamp with you?
Yeah.
What stamp? Your town seal. Do we know what it is up front?
I'll go get it. I think I know what it is.
Thank you. C, discussion with a possible action to approve local funds need to add to a segment of the green leaves along Mitchell back to the CBD, no, CBBG grant number 1585, let me start over.
Yep.
The CBBG grant number 18523-1.
Twenty-one.
Wait, did I make?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one.
Yep, so this also goes with H. H kind of got separated from the menagerie of emails and agenda items and stuff, so H is actually talking about the findings that we had when we met.
I, we should, so, we need to skip down to H.
So, if you want to do H first and then C, that would be okay?
Down to H. Discussion with possible to, action to review the findings from a meeting concerning the drains issue at Third and Mitchell. Yes, that's.
Do you guys want to talk about that? Start that off?
Sure.
You want to go?
I don't care.
When the engineer came and talked to us, he said that they came in with a price of like $590,000. Our CBD grant wasn't that big, so they had to take some cuts out of that grant. And what they could count, could, what they took out was the part between Third and...
Like, Second area?
Second.
Wherever the next, it's all the underground section.
Took that out. And I guess I didn't realize that they, that's where they made the cut, because they also made a cut over on Oklahoma. But what they did is they did really good from the first part, and they're doing a really good job on the second part. The only problem is with this section here, there's about a foot difference. And this part runs underneath, and it's all rotted out, and it goes underneath homes that have the covering over the top of it. I mean, they have, they don't have no ditches.
Just lawns.
There's no ditch.
Yeah.
And so, we're going to have to tear out their lawns, put in the new drainage, that will, and he said that it will work, because this is the right height, this is the right height, but in this middle part, it is wrong.
So, yeah, so, it was over budget. We voted to, with a change order to bring it back into budget, which cut a few things out, but I don't know that it, it definitely wasn't made clear to me as the funding agency exactly what part, but Tiffany was here at the time, and so, if it was made aware, and then we didn't have the engineer at that meeting where we are approving all the changes, so I don't know, I think it just got lost in translation, and it was clear that Oak was being cut between Kansas and Oklahoma, and I guess a little bit on Oklahoma out further east. But this section here wasn't made clear to us. So, I think, from the engineer's perspective, somewhere in that stretch along Mitchell was going to have to be shorted, so it would have backed up somewhere at some point in time. So, it was chosen that middle section for whatever reason, so. And I know it was hard going back and forth with Kraft Reynolds trying to get an agreement on the change order, and so, maybe he said, we'll do all this, but not...
On that change order?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so on that original change order, and so, maybe in that, he said, hey, I could do all this and we can cut that section. So, but we're at a point now to where...
Why did we dig, why did we dig so deep, knowing that it wouldn't drain to that?
Well, that's...
All the others are a foot deeper.
Well, this section is the older section, and so, it will be dropped to be in, in alignment.
Because I think, Harold, the problem was the street south of there wouldn't drain without it going that deep. Fifth and maybe Fourth. But what I don't understand is, if you're building a project, you don't pour the foundation and then build the roof, and expect it to fit together. And they've done both ends, and once again, I want anybody to get the impression that I'm blaming this on the construction company or not, because it was all engineering, but I do not understand if you cut something, why they didn't come to explain to the town what they were cutting, that they cut out the middle. And to me, it would have made more sense to go and build what we have funding for and then add the end on later, because the way it is now, it's kind of got us in a, in a bit of a bind, isn't it? And people are upset because we spent a lot of money over there, and it's still not draining, nor is it ever drainage.
I'm going to dig off to the fix. Afternoon.
Were you given the change order?
Yes. One forty-one, seven twenty-five.
So, in order to add that section, here's a map. I had him, I'm very visual, so I had him give me a map of what we were doing. So, this is, you guys want to share it? So, we took this off, this off, and these two things, those four things. So, we're adding back, those will stay off, and we're adding back in those two things to this project. So, that's that middle section, and then I don't, I'm not quite sure what that is, that little piece. So, those coming in is 141, 725.
Now, when we dig any yards up, we're going to have to put them back to yard, but we're going to leave this.
No, you'll put sod back over it.
Put sod back the way we found it.
In the previous grants, the one before this one, we had to also put sod in, and there, because where we were working had grass, so we did that same thing.
So, this is just between Second and Third, is that what you're saying?
Third and, well, yeah.
It's, yeah, it's wherever it stops underground.
It may not be exactly, but...
Okay.
It's where there's no ditch, that, if the ditch runs underneath the lawns, that's the area.
Just out the road, is where?
Yes.
Why do we have to put it back to grass?
Because that's what your homeowners will want, I'm sure. They're maintaining it as part of their yard.
They, they paid to do that, so if we undo it, and they pay again, I don't think they're going to be happy. And it's not their fault. I mean, that's just my thoughts, but...
It's really kind of strange, too, because on Fifth Street, the water is going down the street now, and it hadn't before. I mean, it would go like the first three or four houses, but now then it's going clear down the street.
Do what? She said that Fifth Street is draining.
Fifth Street, the water is going to clear down the street, whereas before, it didn't do that. I realize we've had a lot of rain and everything, but it would usually just go to the third house, which is ours, and the fourth house, but now it's going to clear down the street. It's just on the side, you know, on both sides.
So, after the meeting, I know Bert came up to Town Hall and looked at some finances.
Yeah, I was just looking here, in our, because we've got restricted sales taxes earmarked, we've got, and this was at the end of February, reserve for capital outlay, which could be used for any capital project, correct, Tammy?
Mm-hmm.
Eight hundred and seventeen thousand, five hundred and fifty-two dollars. We've got the funds to pay for that. I think, personally, I would like to see us finish the project. I don't want to halfway do something and go off and leave a problem that's still not going to work.
Right. And because it's so unusual being in the middle...
Yes.
What if you don't get funding the next year, and then that offset again for another year? So, you might go two years without it, and then a lot of unhappy residents, so...
And if we do get funded next year, we can use it on, we can't reimburse ourselves...
Right.
But we can use it on another capital project...
We'll find another...
...that is probably just as needy.
Yes.
We can find, find infrastructure projects out there all day long.
Oh, sure, sure we can.
What were you saying, it's coming out of the, Bert?
Reserve for capital outlay. The restricted sales tax, a portion goes to earmarked for street improvement that can only be used for that, and it could also be used for drainage as well, but it's only got 213, 942, so I would hate to see us tap 141 out of 213. I'd rather save that for street improvement and take it out of, of reserve for capital outlay, eight seventeen, five fifty, five fifty-two. And while they're here, we would, we would just finish it. They would re-sod the lawns, correct, Jennifer?
I believe so.
And...
Any other questions on this? Randy?
I don't think so.
Okay. Then we'll go back up to C, discussion with possible action to approve local fund needed to add a segment of drains along Mitchell Road back to the CBBG grant number 18523-21.
Needs to be a drinking game. Right. How many times can I get him to say it?
I make a motion to...
You'd want to, where you're going to pull it from, and then the amount, in your motion.
That was, okay.
Yes. Sorry, I didn't mean to be bossy on that.
I, that works. Sometimes we need some bossiness.
It just needs guidance.
And what was that? From, from other capital outlay, is how it's listed here. Is that the correct...
Yes.
Title for that account?
Other capital outlay in the restricted sales tax fund.
Yeah.
And the other capital outlay in...
In, in the...
In the amount of...
Yeah, but the amount of 141...
Seven twenty-five.
Seven twenty-five. And put, from RSTF, for restricted sales tax.
Okay, I make a motion to approve the local fund other capital outlay in the amount of 1,000, $141,725 of the restricted sales tax fund. Second. Roll call, please.
Cliff?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
D, discussion with a possible action to approve purchase and equip a Chevrolet Tahoe 1500 full wheel drive, nine C one percent model for a police department.
You didn't tell me this, Mayor said there's so much fun.
I know. He's missing it already.
That, me? Yes, sir.
Okay, so we budgeted for $40,000, and it comes out of capital outlay for a police vehicle. Police car itself is $41,000. We budgeted for $21,000 for the equipment. The equipment altogether could run about 14, so that puts us at 55. So, we have $6,000 left over. Any other questions?
I love how you sell stuff. Spend $55,000, but it's $6,000 less than we thought it's.
$6,000 less we budgeted for.
There you go.
We will have to move, so, didn't explain anything, we'll have to have an amendment, because we only budgeted for $40,000 for the vehicle, so the extra $1,000 will come out of the other equipment, I assume. Is that right, Danny?
Um, yes, if we, if it ends up going over budget that's available, budget amendments have to be prepared for it.
Yeah. So, this may actually carry into the next fiscal year, so we'll talk about that, depending on when they invoice, everything comes in.
Do you know how long this is going to be out?
It'll be done, getting built this week.
Really?
He said it could take from a day to a month to get shipped.
Well, they're like, they probably built it today, after a long holiday week.
Get it, get it, start driving, finish entire call, cover it.
Yeah.
I don't know what he would go back to.
You guys have got all the information, but you guys got some of it.
Yes, we do. And it's going to be black.
It is.
Not red.
Huh?
Not red.
And you can't get, but we can't get a white one?
Can't get a white one, yeah.
For some reason.
I tried.
So, we don't need these?
They're not building white ones.
Unless you happen to see how much it costs to get around, make it white. Maybe they'll take around $6,000 instead of...
Probably more than that.
This is going to be our first four-wheel drive vehicle for the police department?
All of our, the stores all will drive.
They are?
Yeah.
Okay.
This will be more equipped for, like, quick for it though, than the Ford's are.
They're going to be bigger, it's going to be bigger also.
It will be, that'll be more storage stuff. We can actually, oh, we can pull a trailer with it if we need to, for going to the range or whatever.
Harold, will you be accessing one of the older vehicles once you get your hands on this one?
I don't know that we have the, I don't know if it'd be a good idea, right? Now, if we have one go down, we just don't have nothing else. Our oldest one we're driving, the oldest one we have is 2013, that is Brian's, but the one we're using right now that's in service, that's normally driven, is a 2014, yeah, 14. It's, I don't remember how much it has on it, like $97,000 on it. That would be ideal, I don't know that we had the luxury to do that.
Is that the one that's got the transmission flipped?
Yeah.
But it is still usable?
Yeah, after you go about, if you're going to hear a key, if you're getting about 60, it's fine. I would like to do that, yes, David. I would like to surplus that.
Well, I didn't mean to, you know, that was question form that I hit you with there. I wasn't trying to...
There you go.
...tell you to cut that fleet size down. That's not my place to do that. I just, I'm old fashioned about working maintenance on those cars, and you know that, so. Do you think we, have you had that transmission looked at for repairs, or?
I don't, no, I haven't had it looked at, but I've spent a lot of other money on, I think I'm in that vehicle this year, on other things. And I don't, it's driven by, that car has driven by reserves, so it gets driven maybe once a week, if that, so it's typically not driven very often.
Okay, thanks.
The reason I ask about the transmission, I think I'm kind of going pretty much follow along with David here, that if the transmission is that bad, is it even good for backup? I mean...
Yeah, I agree with that.
You know?
I've noticed that, all the, there's nothing against the Explorer's, we, after about 60, 70,000 miles, they'll start having a lot of issues.
Or maybe, I don't know...
The ones I've driven, I've driven almost every car over there, and...
You're talking about transmissions slipping on all those Fords?
Yeah.
All of them start that at 60 to 70,000?
60, 70,000, yeah.
Sound like we need to go to Chevrolets.
That's what I'm trying to do. Now, that, is, when I found out the price for the Tahoe, it was the same price as the Explorer...
Right.
The Tahoe is a bigger vehicle.
You can do more with it.
Yeah, it's a heavier built vehicle.
Yeah, bigger built vehicle.
Could be on a truck thing.
Yeah.
So, we might get 120,000 miles out of this one. We ought to get 200 out of it.
I think, I mean, the county has some Tahos, so they get, they get quite a few miles out of them. You, I mean, how many is your Tahoe? I mean, how much, how much does it have on it?
Hundred and, what, 20, 30, probably?
Yeah, something like that.
Of course, it had over 100 when we bought it.
I did a ride along, and I sure did not like those little cars, in life at all.
There's not a whole lot of room there. I could barely get in and out of them. I can't right now either.
Yeah.
Kind of got a jump.
Well, and I think, I've had some people ask me, why are you, why is that what we see on TV, police departments all over the nation, when you see some kind of a big disaster, they've all got those? If they're not that good of a car, why is everybody using them? And I, I think Ford come up with that and put a police package on it, but I'm not sure the Explorer was really the right vehicle to do that with. That's just my personal opinion. The Explorer's just a lighter duty vehicle.
Well, let's be honest, I mean, for a long time, they were a lot cheaper.
Yeah, well, yeah.
They were a lot cheaper than the Tahos and everything else, so a lot of people were going to them.
Yeah. Yeah, I think they were about a third cheaper.
Yeah, they're under the same price.
Yeah.
I make a motion to approve the purchase and equip a Chevy Tahoe 1500 full wheel drive, nine C one pursuit model for the police department. Second. Roll call, please.
Cliff?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
You didn't say two, right?
No, sir.
I swear I heard two.
Nice try.
I thought he said two, two. Like, you did, you didn't say you never had the transmission looked at.
Say that again.
You did say the transmission's never been looked at.
Not a specific car, I don't think so. It, I haven't had it, I'm sure they looked at it when they drive, I mean, when the, when we take it in to get it serviced, they look at everything, so.
What do we do off service staff?
R and H, up there in town.
Okay.
We use the lanes also.
They have the computer to make sure it's just anything like a ground issue?
They should, yeah.
I know that, like, in that wiring harness, one wire could be backed up and not let it ship, right? You have the, has a connector.
Yeah. I'm a mechanic, I've got it on, yeah. I can change the little brakes, if I hurt it, that's about it.
Okay, discuss with possible action to approve the 23, 24 budget as presented by Crawford Associates.
Okay, well, we can't approve it tonight because we have not had a public hearing. That is per state law. And so, once we talk about the budget tonight, then we can bring it to a public hearing for approval at that point. But what I've prepared for you is basically a, pretty much an identical budget to what we had last year, not knowing any of the projects or anything that is going on right off the top of my head, and not knowing the grant projects going on. Tiffany's prepared these in the past several years, so I've not, not been involved with the budget process. By the way, my name's Tammy Hunt, I'm from Crawford Associates. I know you met my boss, Frank, he was here at a previous meeting, but the way I put the budget together is, I went ahead and projected out of what we plan on receiving and spending for the rest of this fiscal year, to determine what fund balance carryover we have for each of the funds. And from that point, we can determine what we plan on receiving in New Year and spending in each of the departments.
I do.
And so, there's not a whole lot of difference than what you guys approved from last year, but I was just going to kind of field any questions or explain anything that you, questions that you have on the budget for tonight, since this is probably new to everyone, except Bert, obviously.
Yeah, my, and I may have misread this, and now I'm not even looking at the page I saw it on, but were we, were we dipping into fund balance pretty significantly with this budget?
On which fund?
Well, I'm looking, I guess, at restricted sales tax on page eight.
Okay, on restricted sales tax, um...
I mean, oh, could you tell us, I guess what I'm really asking, Tammy, is what, what is our net fund balance? what, what is our net fund balance gonna be with this budget in the general fund and then with, like, the restricted?
I see a formula problem with restricted. That should be a positive, that should be a gain.
Of one eighty-seven?
Um, no, in the current year, on page eight, Bert's referring to, um, restricted sales tax, in the current year, that's a four hundred, a thousand dollar gain that we're anticipating. And part of that is the ARPA money that we received, which basically half of that, so proposed to spend for the next fiscal year is a hundred eighty-seven thousand of the carryover is what we have here. So that's, that's not significant.
I'm looking, how much was our ARPA?
ARPA was.
One ninety-five.
One ninety-five was the half of it.
So we're projected to spend less than the ARPA money?
Yes.
So it's not really a net dip into fund balance?
No.
Okay.
No.
I'm happy with that.
So, each of the funds, uh, if you wanna look at each of them individually, um, start on page seven of your draft, and the general fund, we are projecting to use, the way the budget's prepared at this point, we're projecting to use seventy-seven thousand, six oh four of the fund balance carryover. That is saying that we're gonna spend that much more than what we bring in, or what we're estimating to bring in. And so, if you look through page seven through page seventeen, those are all of the, the funds that we have included in this budget. The general, all the way through, and I think the OWRV fund is inactive, and we still have sixty-one thousand, or sixty-nine thousand setting in there, um, have you guys talked, that's that money that we were setting aside to make the monthly payments for, I wanna say it was the, the water plant. We set aside eight thousand a month, and this is what's left over after we've paid that loan off.
Where's that at, Tammy?
On page fourteen. Page seventeen.
Oh, seventeen?
Yeah.
I went on the wrong page.
That was just under the direction of board, setting that money aside so that we would have that payment amount available and.
So what are our options to do with that, could, well, the loan's paid off.
That, the loan that we were setting this money back for was paid off.
And I think we've got this balance because we paid off early.
Right.
And so we voided some interest.
Right.
So.
So it could be used towards capital, we could bring it back into the utility authority and use it, because this is where the money came from, was the utility authority, so we can bring it back into the utility authority and use it for capital or anything that we want there. This fund could be closed.
I think that'd be, I think it's a good idea.
Yeah.
Because that's sixty
Nine dollars.
Right at seventy thousand dollars.
Right.
We could use on a water project or a sewer project.
And it could help with the water lines or whatever.
Exactly.
Yeah. Yeah, each of the funds that are set up, um, like the general, the street and alley, restricted sales tax.
How do you see, like, say, you got a quarter cent sales tax?
That actually, the restricted sales tax actually has two cents of the four cents, um, where the money is, um, restricted for swimming pool, ambulance and emergency services, other capital outlay and street improvement. And those are set up by ordinance and, um, citizen vote.
All right, well, as I was asking though, like, that quarter cent sales tax that we got, where do I go to look at and see where that was actually put into what fund?
The restricted sales tax, if it was, uh, restricted for any particular.
Like street, street briefs?
That it's gonna be in this fund.
So I go, which, I mean, I'm asking, where, where do I go to look at? Uh, where would you say, what page?
Um, well, this counts all of them, now, when I was looking at the sales tax to project out, may I approach and I'll, I'll show you what I'm using?
I did. You just sorry.
Like, for example, this is the sales tax that we've received through May eighth. We have not received anything for June yet, obviously, so it's one point two million. The way it's split, and this is just my, uh, my figuring on estimates, the way it's split, there's the one point two million that total collected, of that, half of it goes to the general fund. One cent goes to swimming pool, all of this is deposited into restricted, but this is how it is, um, this is how it's restricted, one cent is swimming pool, um, I believe it's half a cent is ambulance and emergency services, and a quarter is capital outlay and street improvement.
Right, like, like this, this number right here, where would I go into my C, exactly?
Uh, do you have what I, um, what Frank brought? You do, don't you?
Mm-hmm. I have one, I'm gonna go there.
Okay, here's revenues, this is straight off the computer system, there's the quarter cent, this is what was budgeted this current year, this is the current month for February, and that was year-to-date, so it's quarter street, quarter capital, one percent ambulance, or actually, that should be half a cent, and one percent for street, so it, it's listed in the computer system as separate.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Tammy.
So we do keep track of it that way. Now, when Jennifer was talking about the, um, grant projects, I know majority of it was budgeted in this current fiscal year, but if anything goes over into the new year, we can always amend the budget, um, for next year. The budget is simply a plan on how we want our year to go, and we know nothing goes the way we planned. So it's amendable, we, it's not set in concrete once we adopt it, we can always make budget amendments as needed.
So like, at seventy thousand, do we have to touch it? I mean, can we leave it there, kinda like a rainy, uh, rainy day fund?
Oh, see, that's just what we've collected for this fiscal year, so yes, um, and also, in that report that Bert has, that you also said you have at home, I show how much balance is in, in that restricted sales tax fund for capital, other capital, street improvements, uh, to date. And we'll have that for the end of the fiscal year as well. So yes, it, we don't have to use it, it's just, it just builds, but.
Can I say something? Yes, please, um, every year I make this statement, and I make it again, that we're not the federal government and we can't spend more money than we take in. Now, we really can, because we've got money saved back in the form of fund balance.
Right.
And, uh, if you look on page seven, where Tammy's got at the bottom there, change in fund balance, seventy-seven thousand, six hundred and four dollars, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
And that means we're gonna spend that much more money than we're gonna take in this year. But if you also look at the next line above it, where it's got total, our current year budget, we were to take in a million three hundred ninety-nine, and what our actual, what we've taken in so far, plus what she's estimating for the remainder of the fiscal year, is a million four twenty-four. So we've gained about twenty-five thousand of that back.
Yeah, and, and these are just estimates because we, state law requires us to have a plan in place. We have to budget by fund, by department, and it used to require us to budget by categories such as personal services, uh, materials and supplies, uh, other services and charges, capital, but they've allowed us to budget by department, so it's by fund, by department. And so, this is a plan that we put in place, and like I mentioned when I first started talking, that this is basically looking at the current year budget and just kinda adjusting it on the projections of the, the current fiscal year.
I guess my, my concern isn't really now, it is just that I think we really need to watch our spending. Typically, our sales tax revenue has come in higher than we projected, and that's been a good thing.
Yes.
Not always, but.
Not always.
This past year it has.
Yeah, we had that pandemic and it affected everybody.
That hit us hard, but what I'm saying, guys, is I, I feel like we need to keep a close eye on these numbers when we get our quarterly reports, and if we're gaining on that fund balance, great, if we're not, I think we need to look at our spending and what we can do to adjust things to keep it from.
Mm-hmm.
I don't mind taking money out of savings, son.
Right.
To carry us through, and that's not a huge amount.
That's not a huge amount, um, state law requires us to have ten percent carry forward every year. Right now, we're above thirty percent.
Right.
And so we're in great shape, ideally, I would prefer us to stay at thirty percent. Anything above that, um, we can use, the only problem is, we don't need to be using it for reoccurring costs, 'cause that will keep hitting us every year, now, if it's a one-time hit, great, but reoccurring cost is not something that we wanna dip into fund balance for.
Good point, 'cause if we have to dip into it to pay salaries and things of that nature, it's gonna disappear pretty quick.
Yes.
But the one-time, what we just did tonight was a great example with that drainage project, a one-time
Yes.
hit on that.
Yes, so like capital, you know, just that we use periodically, um.
I'm just tight, want us to be careful.
Yes, right, I agree, I agree a hundred percent.
Well, give you an example, I have another client that I've been working on their budget, and they have been spending like no tomorrow because they had significant fund equity balance, and they're down now to where I'm trying to balance the budget and it's, the money's just not there. So they're to the point where they're having to make significant cuts and utility rate increases just to balance their budget.
I agree, we need to dump like this, and we can make some money there, too.
So.
About the dump, yeah, it's through that.
Yeah, now, Bert had mentioned to me that, um, the dispatching uh, for the police department needed to be included in the budget, and I did not have that in there. So I will put that amount in there or double-check, make sure.
That tangent, I can tell you exactly what that amount is.
Okay. Now, this is also based upon the personnel that we had in place and that we knew that we were filling positions for. So if you guys have other changes on that, then discuss and just let me know, before we put this to the public hearing.
Tammy, that amount for nine-one-one dispatch for the coming fiscal year will be forty-one thousand, three ninety-four, fifty-five?
Forty-one, I'm sorry, repeat that again?
Forty-one, three ninety-four, fifty-five.
Okay.
And.
They wanna start in June?
They wanna start in June, so that will come out of this year's budget.
One twelfth of it.
Correct, well, yes, one twelfth of that, I mean, just the June payment.
Okay, I'll, I'll have to look in detail of the contractual services in the police department to see what's included in there.
Well, and it's police, fire, and EMS.
Okay.
They're dispatching all three, mostly police, so most of it should come out of their budget.
Okay.
Back to the driver, bring it.
Getting a new car.
I'll take it.
There goes that Tahoe.
You take the enforcement?
Yeah, there went your Tahoe. I think almost a dollar for a car.
Dollar for dollar.
Okay, so I will put that in for sure, and if there's any other changes, I know this is a whole new, um, process, and so if you have any questions in looking through it, just ask me.
I'm sorry, but can I ask one more?
No, you're at your limit. Get right again, I'm sorry.
Um, did, did you figure anything for personnel salary increases?
I did not, so if you want that worked in there, then let me know.
I could take a hundred fifty-nine thousand.
There's, if you'll look at page seven, we have that transfer from utility authority, so we can always adjust that if need be to help the general fund not spend as much fund balance. 'Cause this last year, we budgeted fifty thousand and didn't even.
Touch it.
Touch it.
Where's that at, Tammy?
Um, about the middle of the page.
Second column.
I think it's under the F in draft, the fifty thousand.
Ah. That's part of the F.
Yeah, that draft kinda hides some of it. So also, if there's any type of.
It's kinda rainy day money too, Europe, that's something that we didn't ever access.
Now, when I prepared this, I prepared it based on the current rate of pay that we had made first.
I just feel like, and I know this isn't on the agenda, but since we are in the budget, talking about next year's spending, I just feel like we are I feel like we need to be paying personnel better and attract and keep good quality personnel, we've got good people now, and, um, I just feel like they're our most important resource.
Well, yes, they are.
Yeah, and if, you want, if you guys, um, decide to want me. And if you want, if you guys decide to want me to work something in, I can. If, if you don't at this time and want me to amend the budget after it's adopted, we can do that as well.
I'd rather see it worked in now before we get done.
Yeah.
You're probably at a five percent raise.
Five percent across the board?
Yeah.
For full-time?
What, and since we didn't set a salary for a new town administrator, if you all remember, I believe we kind of was going to base that on experience and education and that kind of thing. Do you know what you budgeted for administration, Tammy? I could look here, I guess.
I must say, I believe it was forty-eight hundred a month.
Well, that's the interim, but.
I based, I based it on that though.
Oh, you did?
Yeah.
Okay. So that's, that's not going to be enough either for a permanent.
Okay.
Are we also adding the position of utility?
Public Works Director.
Yes, Public Works.
So we're going to be adding Public Works.
Is that like a, of the two dollars that Tammy said are Public Works? Or we were, we've talked about.
Yeah.
Absolutely. I support that a hundred percent.
Okay.
Ten percent.
That's what we're advertising for, so.
Cliff, I, I have, I have a comment on just general personnel pay raises. Back a couple of months ago, I was doing some reading up on the topic. And it was when we were all looking, studying our town administrator position, pay raise versus hiring a new person and what we want to set their salary at.
Right.
One of the things I read, and I was reading state law, and I, you know, I admit that I'm not a lawyer, okay? And Tammy, you correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong saying this. But what I read in state law was that when we give, when we hire somebody into a position as an employee with the town, we're supposed to set their pay at a certain level, which we can work that together as a team, I'm sure.
Right.
But if and when we want to give them pay raises, that we are supposed to use the annual consumer price index as, I don't want to say a rule, but I want to say the consumer price index is what we're supposed to base our pay raise on for our employees. Last year's CPI was eight point seven percent. That's just an example. Something for you guys to think about. Tammy hasn't corrected me yet, so I think Tammy might agree with me.
That's considered the cost of living increase. And so that, that is kind of a guideline as to what pay raises would be.
Right. Guideline is a big word. Yes, ma'am.
But there's no requirement to follow that. Now, if you want to call it a cost of living, that is where you would look for the percentage.
Yeah. So last year, it just happened to be eight point seven. This year, it might be one point oh.
Right.
Or it might be three point five. You know, you guys, we all see the CPI on the news. Usually it's where we see it, read about it, financial news.
Yeah, I haven't looked it up this year.
About a year or eighteen months ago, we as a board set up a pay, a pay increase schedule. I don't know really how that really relates, and I don't remember the prices. But we did have, so we, and we handed out to the employees. They said, okay, if I work this year, then I get a raise this year. And then this next year, I get a raise then also.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that would be similar to the federal civil service.
The basic, sorry, to interrupt. The basic rule now is three percent every year for all town employees other than police department.
Say that again.
Three percent is how it's set up right now. Three percent pay raise for all town employees. I don't know that, if Tiffany, was she town administrator? I don't think she's on that. She was on pay scale, I have her, I have her saw. Town employees are three percent, police departments one point five.
So we do have an agreement like that, but we can adjust that.
Yeah. I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, Harold. I'm actually saying these things in support of what Bert said.
Right.
I too think that we need to pay our employees better, if at all possible. I know we pay them fairly well right now, fairly well. But I think we need to improve things over time to, so we can, you know, retain our, our employees and let them gain experience. And certification is a big deal in my mind. I'm a certification guy also. Again, that's my old-fashioned management techniques coming through. That water plant out there, the water systems, the water certifications for our employees, me are very, very important. We need to, we need to let our employees get as certified as possible. And we might even want to try to put some pay raises, attack, tag some pay raises along with those certifications.
And we, we've done that, I think, we're still doing it. Took where, when I came in, they got their D license, they got a step. They get a C, they get another step. And I think what I'm hearing you say, and correct me if I'm wrong, but Tammy said she put in a five percent. And if the CPI this last year was eight something, we're not even helping them keep up with inflation. They're still at a net loss.
For last year?
Yeah.
You're absolutely correct. And I'm going to stop there because we did do some voting on some pay raises, and I voted no. And that's the reason I voted no, was because I wanted the pay raise to be bigger than what we were talking about on that particular vote. Do you guys remember what I'm talking about?
Roughly, yes.
Yeah, you recommended a five percent.
Right, for Tiffany.
And I voted no. And that's why. I was expecting an eight point seven.
I just, I think our starting, we really need to look at harder because we're starting at.
Ten fifty.
I don't even remember, ten fifty?
I think it's ten fifty start. Am I right? Ten fifty start.
And it's just like, we've got a position up in here in the office. We can't compete.
Yeah.
I mean, they can make that, it's solid. I'm assuming that Lowe's probably.
Walmart. Lowe's starts out higher than that.
Higher than ten fifty.
Walmart starts at fourteen, you know.
My question, like I said, I know this probably might be a little different, but like, state Oklahoma got federal money for plugging wells. All right. We as employers got to be abided by the Davis Bacon Act, which is fair, equal opportunity employer. So with us getting federal grants and stuff, how can we, we never have to do that.
We do.
That they do on those grants, not for our regular income or anything like that. It's Davis Bacon Act is part of a single audit or federal monies. So that only applies to us with federal monies.
Like.
Like the grant project.
That's what I'm saying. Like them guys out there, they have to meet that?
Yes.
And we, and we see that here in the office. We have to turn all that in when we turn in the grants?
They require, are required to provide that information to us for the ones that actually work on that project, which would be the contractors and such.
I've been, I've been through class for about fifteen hours.
What we're got when they first started that project here, one of the things that had on it was that they were in compliance with the Davis Bacon Act and this and that.
Like I, like I, my deal though, if I send David down there to supervise it, he has to be on, we have, he has, we have to buy that grant.
No, he's not being paid out of grant money.
If he's not being paid out of federal grant money, then no.
Cliff, let me run a little bit more, if you don't mind. On the flip side of the coin that I was just talking about, now what I want to see, when we, when we pay our employees competitive pay scales, which I think we're going to eventually move there. And I would love to be a part of that as it happens on this board. But as we do that, I want to see our employees responding. I want to see them, I want to see, you know, this is going to sound corny, but I'm going to say it anyway, right in front of this camera. I want to see some clean trucks. I want to see equipment getting greased and maintained. I want to see trailers with taillights and brake lights on them instead of stuff that's broken and dragging wires on the ground. I can go on and on and on. And I'm not going to do that for time purposes here in the meeting. But our employees, when they're being paid competitive pay scales for us to retain them and to get them trained and to help them with their families and et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And I want to see some responses from those people. I want to see, I want to see good stuff happening. I want to see pride in their work. I want to see great results, not good results. And I'll stop there. I think you guys agree with me.
I do want to mention, part of their benefit package is we provide them with health insurance and the town pays for it. So that kind of offsets a little bit of the, the pay raise. They're not having to pay out of pocket for their health insurance. We do provide that for them.
Yes, ma'am. I'm aware of that, but I'm glad you brought that up.
Tammy, what, yeah, I'm glad as well because I've got a question. In that statement, it kind of sounds like we're more the exception than the rule. Are all communities not doing that or?
Most communities will provide for the employee, but not dependents.
Well, we don't provide for dependents.
Yeah, so, but then we have some communities that will provide employee plus up to a hundred and forty dollars for dependents.
I see.
So, and then there's some, some really small communities that don't even provide health insurance. Now, I don't know if anybody's ever looked at the Secure Oklahoma to see if the town can apply for reimbursement on any of that.
We, we are doing that. And we have been, we are being reimbursed through Insure Oklahoma?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, Tiffany had implemented that. And I know in the past, we've got some pretty good reimbursement from that. And I, I just asked because I, I thought, well, ain't everybody done that? But, but we are offering about the best health insurance plan that's out there. I mean, it's.
Right.
Every year, insurance people tell us that, hey, this is a top Cadillac plane. And I'm, and I'm proud of it.
Yeah.
Randy, you have any questions about the budget here?
Um, I don't think so.
David?
I'm good.
Harold?
I'm good.
Bert, you have any last ones?
No, I've already spoken my pieces.
I have something on mine. So she budgeted on mine, Brent wasn't included in that, he's a dispatcher. His salary is twenty-three thousand with, with benefits that comes up, so up forty-one thousand. Vibe is low end, eighteen thousand for benefits. So eighty is one thousand, you said, Tammy?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So he's no longer working for us and it is a, what was it called, a rebate then?
Severance.
Severance. Won't run out after this, this year. So she and I, I talked about going and adding another, an additional police officer on our budget. So that, the salary for that would be thirty-nine thousand. So I went on the high side on that for the benefits of twenty thousand. And that would be fifty-nine with a difference of eighteen thousand. So like I said, she has Brent in there and he's no longer going to be an employee. And if you add a new officer, it adds up to be eighteen thousand dollars more than what she'd already budgeted for. Is that right, Tammy?
Uh, yes, but I'd also included four reserve police officers too.
Which with another officer, we won't be using reserves near as much. I think you would budget fifteen thousand for that. Is that right?
Yeah, that's what was worked into the figure.
So I think this one will have to be amended regardless because Brent's no longer going to be on our budget.
Yeah, what we need to keep is simply because we're going to get another officer, correct?
That's what I'm asking you guys. If, we have to, we have to increase that by eighteen thousand.
Yeah, it's not really something we can decide tonight. You know it's not.
Well, I'm not asking you to decide it tonight, but it has to be budgeted for. So you'd have to amend for it at least, I assume.
Which it could be amended for the original budget adoption or it could be amended during the year when, when they decide to hire another officer. So it's, it's up to you guys when you want to do that. I do have a question on public works director. What was your thoughts on the pay?
It was going to be based upon education and stuff. I was in the, somewhere in the neighborhood of forty-five thousand, right?
I'm thinking fifty.
You're thinking fifty?
I was thinking fifty-five to sixty. I'm talking again, to be competitive. But I mean, if we hire, if we hire the person with the skills we need, we're going to have to hire him away from some other company.
What was your favorite on, no, for the town administrator?
Well, again, I agree with what you guys were talking earlier. Education and experience can be a factor there.
Right.
Plus salary history, which I'm hoping is displayed on the resumes.
Because that could be the sixty-five to seventy-five thousand or more.
Or more.
I like it'll be more.
And if we get the right person in both of those positions, I would be willing and able to vote yes on dollar figures like we're bouncing around here right now.
Okay. I just wanted an idea of what to put in to, as a guide.
I wouldn't consider those rough estimates, Ms. Tammy. Do you guys feel the same way? I think we're pretty close to being on the same page on that.
I think so.
Okay, that sounds good. All right. Well, if there's no other discussions or any other changes, then I'll go ahead and work those changes that we've discussed into it and get the publication available for the public hearing. When did you all want to set a public hearing? We do have to publish a notice in a local paper five days prior to that date.
Well, I was hoping to do it with a board meeting, but I don't know.
I was, this isn't on the agenda, but, so I don't know. I think I can bring it up. We just can't vote on it. I would like to see us postpone the regular June meeting from the eighth to the fifteenth for a couple of reasons. One, I'm not even in town on the eighth, but that, you guys and Randy won't either because we're going to be at the, at the same wedding. But one of the things is that the eighth is falling pretty early. That Thursday's falling pretty early. Yes, it's the second Thursday. But with our short staff personnel in the office for them to get all the bank reconciliations done and everything finalized accounting-wise for our meeting, plus it being the last meeting of our fiscal year, they're going to have to have all of our claims in and approved. I would just like to see it postponed a week. And that's something I don't think.
Also, with their computers down for two weeks.
Yeah.
They're way behind.
They got a lot of catching up to do that, and there's not a way to do that.
And also, my forty-fifth wedding anniversary.
Is on the eighth?
Is on the tenth, but I could get the tenth off. I am on it, off on the eighth.
Oh, congratulations.
Thank you very much. So, but like you said, we can't vote on that because it's not on the agenda. But I would like to go for the, also for June the fifteenth.
I don't know that we have to vote on it. I don't know that we have to vote on it, if it's, if, if the mayor recommends it, then-
The mayor can just do it.
Yeah, I think the mayor can.
Okay, the mayor recommends our next meeting to be June 15th, at 6 o'clock here.
Okay, and I'll go ahead and put the publication for the public hearing that night as well?
Yes. It'll be before our 6 o'clock meeting.
So, do we want it at 5:30?
Yes.
Okay.
The hearing will be at 5:30.
There, it'll be at 5:30.
Meeting ends 6.
Yes. July 15th, June 15th. Is that okay? Okay.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Tammy, I want to say personally, coming up with this, doing that with us, and I really, really want to appreciate that, and thank you for all your hard work that you've put into this, and thank you very much.
Oh.
I really appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Okay, I'll get these changes worked up and-
They've been keeping us out of line for 30-some years.
She will, she will vouch, too.
30 how many?
35.
Wow, fantastic, that's great. Uh, discussion of possible action to approve claims from the last month that were unavailable at the time of the meeting due to the computer problems.
Do we have an ounce on those?
Um, there's, all I had was these to give you copies.
We can't approve the claims for the utility authority.
Right.
Because we're, we-
Utility.
No, I give you amounts.
We don't, we're not, we don't have a utility agenda.
We don't have a, yeah, we didn't.
You can't discuss nothing on the utility.
Correct.
Okay.
Well, I've got, Cliff, I've got a question on this, on one of these reports here. I've got a question on the month of May report on the front page. We got, we got April and May here.
Right.
So, I'm not looking at the April one yet, I'm looking at the May one. On the front page, second to last item at the bottom of the front page, R and H trucks and autos. You guys see that?
Right.
Unit 53 oil change, $566.
It was amended.
Please tell me we didn't pay $566 for an oil change.
We didn't, it was amended, there's another PO, uh, for-
That's a typo, or?
That's what I put it in for, but they said, I can't remember if that was what, the brakes were, uh, brakes or motors replaced on it or not.
So, you've got more work done than the oil change.
There was another PO done, so I don't-
Very good, thanks, Eric. Appreciate it.
If not, that's expensive oil change. Oil's made out of gold.
We have to go over there and arrest them people. That's the only question I have on the May, on the May, uh, report. Thank you, Mayor.
You bet.
I have another question on the May report. Coming down the front page of the May report, about two-thirds of the way down on the left-hand column, it says farm plan. I am unfamiliar with a farm plan for us as a municipal organization. Can somebody explain that to me, please?
That's Atwoods.
Huh?
Atwoods.
Atwoods?
The charge plan with Atwood.
Okay, so they give us tax exemption?
Yes.
Very good.
And then they bill us.
Very good.
But their credit, their credit portion is called farm plan.
Yes, sir, thank you very much. I thought that was a pretty good question.
You didn't know we were farming, did you?
Well.
Somebody paid for the oil, they just give me a permit and, "That one was big."
Yeah.
March 1st orders was 11, 3, big, or that was.
Huh?
What have I done here? Last month, first of August?
Yes.
Oh, yeah?
On the April-
I don't have that paper to see it, so.
On the April, it's showing a digit ticket. Hold on, I lost it. Anyway, it was showing a digit ticket at $3,900 some dollars. That's not a month, is it?
No.
Because it showed, oh, here it is.
I'm trying to find where you're looking at.
Saltes Technologies on page two of the April, about halfway down, a little more Saltes Technologies. Digit ticket service, May 23rd, oh, to October, I'm sorry.
We're paying for our service for the six months.
I'm sorry, I thought that was for my-
For a quarter.
So, that's for basically six months.
Yeah.
Okay, six months.
$3,998, so, okay.
And we started that in December, I think.
Okay, alright. I won't panic.
Yeah, me panic. I have no idea, I signed a PO for that.
You want to accept that?
I think the key number for fire, huh?
We just can't do the utility. I make a motion to accept the claims from last month as permitted.
Second.
Roll call, please. Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
You were the one that seconded it, weren't you?
Yeah.
Okay. Randy?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Gee, discuss with possible action to approve the building permit for the Hennessy Public School to add to the bus barn on Highway 51 in a floodplain.
It's actually not the building permit per se, but the, uh, the plans that the school board had gone up by wholesome engineering, uh, the engineering company contacted me and said, "Hey, we're in a floodplain, uh, what do we do?" So, I contacted, since I'm in process of it anyway, contacted Oklahoma Water Resources Board, uh, floodplain division, and, uh, they said that there's no other FEMA report or study that needs to be done to the area because it's current, it is in a flood zone, but our, our ordinances say that the board trustees of the county Hennessy may grant variances for uses with the side of the form of a floodplain. Uh, so, if, if it's, if it's okay with you guys, if you guys approve it, then I can issue the permit as a floodplain administrator. So, you guys have to approve the addition to the bus barn on the map there, it's that one, it's almost on Highway 51, it's almost directly across the grid and resources. Uh, they're just wanting to enlarge that. I'm asking why, but I figured, uh, in order to get them a permit, it has to be approved by you gentlemen.
Just because it's in the floodplain, right?
Yes, just because it's in the floodplain. It's not for residential use, so.
I make a motion to approve the building permit for Hennessy Public Schools, that's ready.
My second.
Roll call, please.
Bert?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Hi, executive session pursuant to OS Section 307, being one to discuss hiring Blaze Seminac in the Parks Cemetery to re, I'm sorry, Shemani? Excuse me. In Park Cemetery to replace Dylan Atherton. One vote to convene to executive session.
I move to convene an executive session.
Roll call, please.
Bert?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Discussion of possible action to hire Blaze in the Park Cemetery. Do, do you do that for me, please? The action to hire Blaze.
I would like to make a motion to hire Blaze Seminac for the, in the Park Cemetery.
I'll second that. Roll call, please.
Harold?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Chuck, we had to announce this while we got him on here. The Wine Festival is going to be October 7th, and we're going to move the Irish, it's 11 to 5. I guess that would discuss, but, uh, uh, June 24th, there's going to be a wine dine shop, carry down, 6 to 9. Motion to adjourn, second. Roll call, please.
Okay, so I guess Bert got that one in. Alright, Cliff?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Thank you.